We're going to call this meeting to order. We'll start with the roll call. Here.
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 Next, we'll move into a moment of silent prayer or private reflection. Amen. Next, we'll move into the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And do we have a possible motion for an executive session? Seeing none, we'll move on to 2.1 with our student achievement with the Patriots Pen and Voice of Democracy winners.
A tall human was here. So, we're really excited. Every year, the VFW hosts a number of contests for our students. And this year, our students were very, very successful. And we had a staff member honored as well. I'm not sure if any of the students are here. But we would like to recognize the following students and staff for their achievements as part of the VFW Patriots Pen and Voice of Democracy competitions. The following students were named winners for the VFW Post 9401. Mason Martins, Chastity Coleman, and Sophia Loneyell were named winners of the Patriots Pen Essay Competition. Are any of them here from Thunderbolt? We should clap for them anyway. They each submitted essays answering the question, "How are you inspired by America?" Mason Martins was the Post's first-place winner. Gunner Robinson, Logan Swanson, and Given Rue were named winners of the Voice of Democracy Essay Competition. They each submitted essays answering the question, "What are the greatest attributes of democracy?" Are any of those students here? I know two of them had basketball. Gunner Robinson was the Post winner and went on to win at the district level. Katie, do you have an update?
Um, the last update I got was he was set to the state level on December 6th. I don't know the results of the state-level competition.
Thank you. So, can we clap for those high school students who scored? In addition, Mrs. Katie Rabidu was named the 2023 VFW Teacher of the Year. So, would you clap, Katie? We congratulate these students and their teachers and thank the VFW for their dedication to our students and community.
Moving on to 2.2, we have our superintendent with the new and maintained National Board Certified Teachers.
So, good evening, President, members of the governing board. As you know, every student deserves to be taught by an accomplished teacher. National Board Certification was designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers and to generate ongoing improvement in schools nationwide. It's the highest and most respected certification a teacher may obtain. The certification process requires that teachers demonstrate standards-based evidence of the positive effect they have on student learning in alignment with the five core propositions. They must exhibit a deep understanding of their students, content knowledge, use of data and assessments, and teaching practice. They must also show that they participate in learning communities and provide evidence of ongoing reflection and continuous learning. LHUSD is proud to now have 27 NBCTs who joined the 125,000 NBCTs nationwide. Tonight, we recognize eight new and maintained NBCTs. National Board requires that certificates are maintained every five years. Accomplished educators must complete a portfolio that includes a video of their teaching practice. So, first, we are excited to congratulate our newest NBCT, Kristin Fries. So, Kristin has worked for LHUSD since 2013. She currently teaches first grade at Nautilus Elementary School. She describes what she has learned about accomplished teaching from National Board Certification like this. "My National Board journey has prompted me to plan intentional lessons with a specific goal in mind that will impact student learning on an individual and group level." Mrs. Fries earned her certificate in Literacy Reading Language Arts, early and middle childhood. So, in addition to Kristin, seven NBCTs maintain their certification. For teachers who now serve outside of the classroom, they return to the classroom to complete the process and provide evidence that they still meet the requirements of accomplished teaching. Ginny Sotner. Ginny has worked for LHUSD since 2005. She originally certified in 2014. And Ginny states that National Board allowed her to internalize the profession. It rated her practice in student impact and reinforced that leading means learning from the classroom and beyond. Her area of certification is English Language Arts, Adolescence, and Young Adulthood. Ginny now serves as the principal of Starline Elementary School, the school she attended as a child. Congratulations. Next, we have Tanya Gray. So, Tanya has taught for LHUSD since 1998. She taught English for many years at LHHS and now coaches teachers new to Lake Havasu. Tanya earned her certificate originally in 2019 in the area of English Language Arts, Adolescence, and Young Adulthood. Tanya describes certification like this. "The NBCT process has encouraged me to be a better collaborator and through maintaining my certification, my knowledge about teaching and collaboration has deepened, which positively impacts student learning." Congratulations. Next, we have Jackie Murphy. Jackie has worked for LHUSD since 2012. She has taught at Smoke Tree Preschool and Jamaica Elementary School. She now serves as the Instructional Technology Coach. Jackie's certified in 2019 and again in 2023 as an Early Childhood Generalist. Jackie describes the impact of National Board this way. "Throughout my NBCT journey, I have honed my teaching skills, embraced reflective practices, and refined instructional strategies, leading to a more impactful and student-centered approach in my classroom and throughout the classrooms I support district-wide." Congratulations. Next, we have Jamie Tunaman. Jamie has worked for LHUSD since 2010. Jamie taught at Smoke Tree and Jamaica Elementary before serving as the Data and Assessment Coach for the District. Her area of certification is Middle Childhood Generalist. She first earned her certification in 2019. Jamie shared that her National Board journey provided her the opportunity to reflect on her teaching practices and the impact they have on students' learning. Congratulations. Next, we have Marie Hendry. So, Marie has worked for LHUSD since 2004. She is an LHHS graduate. And Marie has worked at Thunderbolt Middle School and now serves as a CTE teacher in Early Childhood Education at the Little Knights Preschool and the Education Professions Program. Marie certified for the first time in 2019 in the area of CTE, Early Adolescence, and Young Adulthood. Marie shared that her National Board journey reinforced her commitment to students and their learning and that each year, a new group of students come into her classroom and the process continues. Congratulations. Next, we have Rachel Knight. Rachel has taught for LHUSD since 2012. She currently teaches kindergarten at Starline Elementary School. Her area of certification is Early Childhood Generalist. Rachel originally certified in 2019 and describes the process as strengthening her teaching practices and making her a better educator for students and her school. Congratulations. And next, we have Melissa Waller. Melissa has taught for LHUSD since 2008. She teaches kindergarten at Starline Elementary School. Her area of certification is Early Childhood Generalist. Melissa originally certified in 2019. And she describes the process like this. "My National Board journey reminds me to keep early childhood best practices as the foundation of what I do and how to best guide and support my diverse learners while continually collaborating with other dedicated educators and reflecting on my teaching and how to best meet the needs of my students." Congratulations. So, while we are honoring these teachers, I would be remiss if I did not also honor the NBCTs in the room who actively coach and support NBCT candidates. These teachers and coaches demonstrate accomplished teaching practices as they continue to maintain their certification. Christina Muselman, Courtney Zampona, Rachel Nutt, Jackie Murphy, Tanya Gray, and Kristy Olson. Thank you for all you do to support accomplished teaching. Tonight, we are excited to partner with the LHUSD K-12 Foundation to support National Board. I'd like to invite the K-12 Foundation up so they may honor these accomplished teachers. We can clap for them, too.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jana Snump, and I am the president for the K-12 Foundation. She's proud of me right now. Tonight, we are here to... Sorry, this is why I don't do speeches. The mission of the K-12 Foundation is to support the students, faculty, and administration of the Lake Havasu Unified School District. Tonight, we are here for the National Board Certification, and we will honor eight teachers. One of these... See, my speech got messed up. One of these teachers have recently received the National Board, Ms. Fries over here. And seven others have maintained their certificates. So, please congratulate as I say their names. And I do ask that you put your hand up so she knows who to give the checks to. Kristin Fries. Jaclyn Murphy. Jamie Tunaman. Virginia Sotner. Rachel Nutt. Marie Hendry. Tanya Gray. And Melissa Waller. Thank you for your dedication to the students of Lake Havasu, and thank you for pursuing excellence in teaching. We do ask that you take a picture with us.
But before we do the picture, I'm going to pin Kristin Fries. So, woo! But before I do that, I do want to say just a few words about Kristin. I've had the opportunity to be in her classroom multiple times, and she is just an incredible teacher. And I want you all to know that she is... And I use this word carefully. She is mesmerizing when you watch her teach. And she reminds me every day of why teaching is the most noble profession. So, congratulations, Kristin.
Moving on to 2.3, we have our Lake Havasu City Education Association, Carol Norakowski. After the Great Escape.
Good evening, President, members of the board, Dr. Stone, and our directors. Congratulations. And just an update, legislative session did open yesterday. There were no committee meetings, but all the bills... Well, the present bills were assigned. The House Ed Committee, to mark your calendars, Tuesdays at 2:00 p.m. And then, the Senate Education Committee will meet on Wednesdays at 2:00 p.m. So, I will be watching the archived videos since, you know, it's at 2:00 p.m. We will continue to watch the discussion unfold about the ESAs and the governor's plan, and we hope for a positive result in that area. So... But I'll keep you posted as bills arrive. Thanks.
Thank you, Carol. Moving on to 3.1, do we have a call to the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to 4.1, and do we have a vote for a consent agenda?
I move that we pass the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 6.1, we have our board election and our governing board president and vice president for 2024.
I would like to make a motion to elect the last person on the governing board who has not served as president. I say that because I really appreciate what this board has done in sharing the load. And I think it's a very important thing for the community to know that the governing board is not the governing board president. We work as a body. And so, it would be my pleasure to nominate Dr. Sharon Harvey for school board president.
And I'll second.
And I would like to second that.
And can we take the vote? Yes.
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 And at this time, we'll take nominations for the governing board vice president. I'll nominate Dr. Eric Aron.
If nobody else wants to do it, I'll do it.
I'll second it. Before we vote, I would also like to be considered for vice president. If I get a second. Or, I'm sorry, if I get a nomination.
Right now, I do believe we have a nomination and a second. So, I believe we do have to take a vote. Yes.
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 So, at this time, yes, we're going to move on to 6.2. We have the superintendent swearing in with the new governing board officers.
So, I, Sharon Harvey, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
I, Sharon Harvey, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of president for the Lake Havasu Unified School District Number One according to the best of my abilities. So help me God.
Very good. Thank you. And we will have Dr. Aron do the same. Dr. Aron? Okay. So, I...
Hi. Craig William Arand. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and the laws of the State of Arizona, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of vice president for the Lake Havasu Unified School District Number One according to the best of my abilities. So help me God.
Thank you. And now, we will have some changing of the seats.
Moving on to item 6.3, passing of the gavel. We just did that. So, now, I now declare the governing board seating seated and organized for 2024. 6.4. So, the second Tuesday of each calendar month will be designated as the regular board meeting date. To comply with ARS 38-431.02.A2, a disclosure statement will be mailed to the Mojave County Board of Supervisors, and a notice of public meetings section will be maintained on our district website.
I move that we approve 6.4 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Yes.
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 All right. We're going to read another... 6.5. Per Board Policy 5-306 and Procedure 5-306.A, the board can appoint a hearing officer to oversee discipline, suspension, and expulsion hearings. Per the job description for Hearing Officer approved December 12, 2006, number 2B point, a hearing officer will be approved by the governing board at the first meeting in January of each year. The following hearing officers will be approved for 2024 and funded through Medicaid as needed. Mrs. Becky Goldberg, Director of Student Services, Director of Student Achievement, Director of Human Resources, Director of Business Services. Do we have a motion?
I move we approve 6.5 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Sharon Harvey?
Yes.
Eric Aron?
Yes.
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 6.6, Business Services, Division of School Facilities. DSF, JOC Contract Removal Installation of Nautilus Elementary Multipurpose Gym Floor.
Thank you, Madam President, board members. The multipurpose gym floor area at Nautilus Elementary is approximately 42 years old and is no longer serviceable due to extreme wear and age. A grant application was submitted to the Division of School Facilities on July 7, 2023, requesting that the floor be completely removed and the concrete resurfaced. Concord Contracting provided a bid proposal as a part of the DSF application at a cost of $228,558. DSF approved the proposal on November 27, 2023 for the removal of the floor and the resurfacing, polishing, and striping of the concrete. At the request of the district, Concord also provided an additional bid that would be a shared cost project between the DSF and the district for added expenses to epoxy the multipurpose gym floor rather than polishing should the exposed concrete floor not be in a condition that is cosmetically acceptable to the district. The district's portion of the shared cost would be approximately $124,507, or the difference between option 1 and option 2. The project would commence during the summer break. Concord Contracting will be procured through their 1 GPA Cooperative Contract, and not-to-exceed is being proposed to cover any required change orders to either the district or Division of School Facilities portion of the project during the construction process. And for example, are the items below not to exceed $300,000 for the Division of School Facilities and not to exceed $200,000 for the district's portion of the cost share.
I move we approve this as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I would... I think it'd be helpful to tally up some of these projects that we are having funded by the DSF because I think that the public might... I just think it's notable how much money... How many projects our district is able to fund using money from the state. And it's a credit to our financial department how much they've worked. I know it's a lot of extra paperwork and a big process rather than just writing a check out of our district funds. We seek money from these other sources, and I really appreciate that. And I think the public would as well. So, it'd be nice to kind of have an ongoing tally.
So, I do have that.
Oh.
Actually, before... Becky approached me after her meetings with you during Christmas break. But before I went on break, I was curious about the same thing. So, in FY '24, this fiscal year, we have approximately $1.6 million in purchase orders that are already out there and on the street to contractors. We have billed so far the state for $400,000 of that for this fiscal year. Fiscal year '23, we did recover $1.7 million from the state for fiscal year '23 for these types of projects. And we do have a responsibility to go to the state to submit applications to them when we do find areas of concern and deficiencies. And then, it's up to them to approve those projects and whether or not they're going to approve the project and fund it. So, this is... Actually, this is not part of that calculation yet for fiscal year '24 because we're waiting your approval. But we can add another $200,000 to that amount.
Amazing.
Hey, I agree. I think that's a great idea for a report. When would be kind of like the best month to have this reported at? Like, a convenience factor for you?
I can do that annually when I present the annual financial report and just make that part of a slide that we include.
Could we go to the paper and say to the paper, "Hey, guys, we're doing this project. This is how much it's going to cost us, and this is how much it's going to cost the state."
Yeah, we could do that as well. The media typically will do follow-ups to these board meetings, so they do see the agenda items and hear the discussion as they review the meetings that occur. But we can definitely put that out in front of them as well. So, while we're on that subject and on this particular action item, I just do want to be clear that... And highlight that portion that should the floor, as we strip up the old tile that's in the gym and that multipurpose area, we just don't know what the condition of the concrete will be, what it'll look like after 42 years. So, the reason why I come to you with these not-to-exceeds and these alternate proposals is that when we're in the process of... In that construction phase, that if something were to occur, I don't have to wait until the next board meeting and stop construction to get your approval to move forward with a Plan B. So, I try to come before you with a Plan B already established so that should we need to pivot to an alternate plan, we can keep construction... so that should we need to pivot to an alternate plan, we can keep construction moving. That's why you see these not to exceed proposals before you. Just because you authorize us to spend up to $200,000 doesn't mean we're going to spend $200,000. But should that be a need and a necessity at that time, because we're working with active campuses and we have a very short window of time during the summer to make sure we reopen these buildings, we want to make sure that we can just move forward and make decisions on the spot as we're faced with those decisions that need to be made. So I just want to clarify, based on the whole subject of transparency and costs and whatnot, that these are not to exceeds for that reason of giving us some flexibility should we need it.
Yes.
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 7.1, Superintendent Report.
6.7.
6.7, Business Services, Vouchers, Student Activity Funds, and Auxiliary Funds.
Thank you, Madam President, Board members. Approval for vouchers for December of '23, student activity funds, and auxiliary funds are in front of you tonight.
I move we approve 6.7 as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Yes.
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 Okay, now we can move on to 7.1.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I would like to congratulate you on becoming the president and congratulate Dr. Aron on becoming vice president. Looking forward to the year as you both serve. Also, congratulations to our NBCTs. We do that every year, and we do have a group of folks who do commit to this each year, so very proud of their accomplishments. And our VFW SA winners, they did an awesome job and to see what happens at the state level as our student went forward. I do echo what Ms. Nowakowski said. The legislative season is open, so it will be interesting to see all of the things that come forward as they pertain to education. Also, be mindful that there is a budget shortfall at the state level, so how will that impact us? So we will all be talking about that as we move forward. And also putting out into the community that it is election season. So in terms of the school board, we do have three seats that are currently up for election. So anyone interested in those seats, you do go to Kingman, to the county superintendent's office. That's where you pull your paperwork, and we are hopeful that community members are interested in serving our kids and our staff and our schools, and we look forward to that as we move forward in the season.
Thank you. 7.2, Governing Board Members. Any comments?
I just wanted to highlight a celebration that I got to go to in December. It was for the CTE program, their internship co-op program. I like to call it a co-op because co-ops are generally thought of as paid internships. What this is, is 30 students each semester at the high school. I think they have an age limit, but it's usually juniors or seniors. Get a paid internship through the chamber to go out in the community and work as interns at various employment places in town. It's a great partnership with the community. Some of the places where the students were employed were the hospital, the fire department, some computer company here in town. I'm trying to remember some of the other ones.
They actually work at my office.
Oh. So, and it's a great, it was a great celebration. What was very interesting is both the kids who were like, "Oh, this is cool. This is exactly what I want to do," and also some of the ones were like, "You know, I need to change and pivot," which is also great information at that stage. You know, "I don't know if I could stand to be around blood all the time," you know, now that I'm actually around blood all the time. So it's a really good program. You know, I just wanted to highlight it, one of the many things we do for the students, and I wish Ms. Becker was still here. I know she was here earlier, but I wanted to give them a shout out.
And I have a couple of things. One is, I'm on the Spanish Curriculum Adoption Committee, and so our, we've narrowed it down to a couple of choices, and they are on display for public inspection if anyone's interested in looking at those Spanish textbooks. Kind of going along with what Dr. Aron said about the CTE programs, I am kind of curious, this is more of a request for our superintendent and board of directors, but I would be curious to have sort of a catalog of some of the certifications that students can graduate, because a lot of our students graduate with more than just a diploma their senior year. And so having kind of an inventory, this was kind of sparked from the prior month when we got a report of how our students are stacking it up against other college students. And so I think it would be helpful also for us to know, first of all, certifications, and also how many students are taking AP exams and getting fours or fives, and what subjects are taking those tests in. And then...
I just want to say that's a great point. I think we talked about, one nice way to present that is kind of like portraits of students in different, you know, kind of paths and things that they go to kind of make that a little bit accessible to the public. So yes, I think that's a great idea. Sorry to catch up.
And then the last one. So this school year, we revised it. We went to school, we returned in August, two days earlier than we normally do, and then we had an extra day off at the tail end of the winter break, and we'll have another day off at the end of testing in April. And I am going to be curious about feedback from teachers. One of the problems that we were trying to solve was allowing teachers to prep for that first day back from RAC without having to use non-contracted hours to do so. And so I'm hoping that because they return on this past Monday, yesterday, before the students arrived today, I'm hoping that yesterday was a valuable time for them to be able to get ready without feeling like they had to cut into their vacation time to do that. So if you are a teacher in this district or you just have something to say about it, I would be curious to know what your response is.
The agenda for Policy 1-302 is collaboratively set between the president and the governing board, board members, and the superintendent. We want to be transparent regarding some changes to our agenda categories and items moving forward. The board is always open to hearing from the public. We are available by way of email and phone. However, sometimes people want to address the board during our meetings. We have a call to the public at the beginning of our meeting for any member of the public that wishes to speak to the board on any item that is not on the agenda. We also allow for public comment on agenda items that have specific community interests, such as curriculum adoption and facility use rates. We also have public hearings when we adopt our budget. Given the variety of ways that the public can interact with our board, we will no longer have a second call to the public at the end of the meeting. There will be no longer an item, agenda item for the press media clarifying questions. We have a very positive relationship with the press outlets in our community and are available as we are to the public by way of email and phone. If any member of the press has questions, they are always welcome to reach out and can even do so after our meetings if they are in attendance. Those are the changes. All right. So 8.1, any board suggestions for future agenda items? Then I will take an emotion for which one? An emotion for adjournment is in order.
I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
I declare the meeting as adjourned. You have to vote. Okay. I'm going to get this learned. First time out. Yes.
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 Okay. Now I declare the meeting as adjourned.